All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. Turn all cell phones like trying to nice as to off or vibrated this time, please.
No guarantee it will call.
Don't worry about it.
It is.
It's me that you speak it up about that. It's not anybody else.
It is not good.
No? Amen.
He's not good.
Okay. Probably no, he isn't.
Yeah, it really works in the garbage.
All right, Mr. Fuentes, would you please lead us in our current and play the seat of service.
Lord, Father, say thanks for all that you do for each of us. We ask for more rainfalls we need in these last few months of the summer. We ask to heal all the sick and we ask to bring our troops home from overseas. Amen, we pray, amen.
The United States to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the July 18th, 2016 meeting, please.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2016 meeting with corrections as noted.
Second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
And we're gonna be on the ball tonight for people here. All right, this is a non-renewal notice, we will give the opportunity to address the city council on any subject at this time. I thought everybody would know. All the casters are not allowed. Anyway, all right, discuss and take action on a non-renewal notice with Republic Service for garbage disposal, and you should have that hand out. Ian, your packet?
Um, this is a per hour contract and it's standard language with any waste disposal contract, so it's not just exclusive to Republic, it's any waste hauler. Uh, the only, or the most traditional remedy for a city to get out of that contract is to give them a renewal letter. If you do not provide them with a non-renewal notice, it automatically re-ups, and in this case, it would re-up for another 10-year contract. I hadn't spoke specifically about the contract. I did talk to Robert Sorles this morning, but I had not talked specifically about this. The last indication we got from Republic, and I think our view committee is that the contract is antiquated and it has a lot of deficiencies in it, and so I think the best thing for all parties involved is to terminate the existing contract with Republic. And then I would also add a request that we do an RFP and put the services out to bid. That's not saying that we will not re-up with Republic, but what it is saying is that we will have a number of options, hopefully have a number of options available to us. I know August seems like a long ways away, but it's actually gonna be one year from today. But when you switch trash contractors, it's not like switching internet providers where you can be down for an hour or two. You have to, you know, logistically plan these things out, or we're gonna be picking up trash and curbs. And so my recommendation is that we issue the letter, I'll send it certified mail upon your approval, um, and then we will craft an RFP, uh, once we get through budget, craft an RFP, put one together October, November, send it out December, start taking bids, uh, in February, and wrap it up.
So when does the contract really expire?
August of, it's either August the 1st or August the 30th of 2017.
Okay. So would you let them have lots of time to know that we're going to do something by February in the letter they do?
This is standard, especially when you consider the contract that we have with them is 20-something years old. Um, they brought to us another revised contract. Um, that is not to say we shouldn't consider that, but I think if we're going to, I think we need to keep all options open.
I make a motion that we take action on a non-renewal notice with Republic Service for garbage disposal.
Second?
I second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, discuss and take action on Langy property that has old, knowledgeable.
Can you give that to Bo real quick? Will send that certified tomorrow, Bo. Um, okay, I meant to get a copy of this made for you guys, and it is... Mr. Langy, very, very unique.
Which Langy, which Langy?
This would be, which Langy was in our office, though? Who does Langy drive?
Oh, Pat.
Okay, was it Pat?
Bill.
Bill.
Please, there we go, through the brother.
I figured he wouldn't know. Uh, Bill was in our office, uh, almost two weeks ago, right after the last council meeting. He got a survey done, and apparently he put a fence over part of our property. If you go out by the old lake, if you go over the dam of the old lake, and you kind of go back to the left toward Quarry Creek is, have y'all ever been out that way? Okay.
Yeah, a long time.
Um, I think Randy knows exactly where it's at, I know exactly where it's at, but just a common person out there probably won't. If you're out there, you're either lost, or...
You're done, tell me you didn't take them.
Problem.
Yeah, the contract, I mean, survey.
Who did the survey? That would be Needham Surveyors in Coleman, Texas.
Needham.
Yeah. Um, anyway, there's about half acre of fenced in that belonged to the city, and he asked if we could swap for another half acre, um, that would actually take in part of Quarry Creek. And again, if you don't know where I'm talking about, this map's not gonna be anything.
I know where Quarry Creek is.
Okay. Section that's penciled off, pinned off in black is what he's talking about.
Okay.
And so that's what we would get.
So from this right here is what he's talking about?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. It's, this right here, just so y'all know, and there's part of our land is, he's got a gate right here, and so part of it is, part of our, he put a gate and a fence over part of our property. So rather than him taking the fence up, which is a really expensive fence, a nice one by the way, rather than him doing that, he would swap us this for this.
I don't see a problem with it.
Does it benefit us either way?
No. I mean, it's, it's...
There's nothing to care about.
It's a little much of a creek, it's going at my mouth.
Yeah. I mean, with our luck, there's like a hallelujah well sitting there with a wolf, it doesn't...
It's all already known, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, that's the swap that he was talking about, and I apologize for not getting this out to you yet, it was just kind of a... There was no good way to make a copy of this beyond...
So he put that big, vast fence in his pocket in the survey first?
I'm not, I'm not even gonna confirm whether or not I...
Did he get the fences up or somebody else hired?
I'm not gonna confirm whether or not I anything on that. I will not speak to anything, I have no absolute certainty of ticking. That's absolutely correct.
What's council decision?
Now, make a motion if we go ahead and do the switch from one acre each to the other for Mr. Langy.
Is it a half or a one?
Half acre.
Half acre.
Yeah.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Ian, uh, hold us for the map.
All right, move from the table to consider the combination of property located at 13-08.
That's what he said, we told him he needed to be here, so he...
Well, she said he's on his way, so I started to mean because I thought he was gonna be here by the time we got to that.
You wanna...
Yep. I'm gonna go ahead and skip over that, folks. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go down and consider approval of the building permits, and I believe we have the one.
Mm-hmm. There was actually another two, but we didn't get to one of them, they just rolled in today, Tom Holland's one down that.
Don't want to...
That one's good. Um, and this one here was Jean Fulton, she was putting two trailers on their property, which is two lots, so...
The one on 13th?
Yeah.
Did she say what year trailer she's gonna put on there?
Um, I did not talk to her.
They are RVs, they are not...
Yeah, they're RVs, I guess.
Oh, recreational.
And they're side by side, too.
They're fifth wheels?
Yeah.
Now, I'm thinking of there. Just ready to...
She written them out?
Yeah. That's what she's starting to do.
Is that, I would, is that on the agenda for now, or is that, you got paperwork on that one right now?
That's it.
That's what this is?
We can go to the next one, if you want. Cause there's also another one there that we need to look into.
Same property?
No.
Let's do that.
Let's say we look into it a little bit, that's really our recommendation for council.
Let's go ahead and hold Fulton's, and the other one that you have, but this one here, the Joe Martinez, you said was good?
Mm-hmm. And she already got them sitting up there?
She is.
Mm-hmm.
That's a bump, we can pull them off pretty easy. Well, there we go, everybody's electrified, so.
Who's the other one, do you know?
Um, Jack Jones, actually that one's good, too.
Jack who?
Jones up there close to Brian's house. He's gonna add a carport onto, I guess that's a garage right there.
Close to you.
Six away from the harbor.
Or six oh five.
Is that the other corner?
Yeah.
It's at the little, uh... Yes, yes, it's Cheryl, it was her mom and dad's house, she was a teacher here for a while, and it's...
Cheryl, like?
Yes. Oh, it's her mom, I told her when you bought that.
Yes, I bought the house because the other house that I moved in, uh, were not good for him.
Yeah. Yeah. Of course, he would put the carport in, right there.
Right there in the back of the house. Basically off the ground, right in the back.
Yeah, cause he's parking, he's parking the grass right now.
Yeah, gotcha.
Which is something I was gonna build it to you about.
In the front yard?
Yeah, in front of the grass, in front of the yard.
Oh. Is that cause he's doing that?
I don't know. You got a mouse there?
No, no. A little map I drew, that's how it was exactly.
Well, there's a car, there's a garage there, there's a slab, so I'm pretty sure he wants to put some cover parking.
Yeah, that's rear parking, it comes off to the third street, and we're getting it back, yeah.
Kewell didn't need to leave that car.
Yeah.
And did you have a one for Joe Martinez?
I don't have, that's the other one that actually...
Oh, okay.
We haven't gotten out there yet.
You haven't gone out to check it?
I haven't gone out, I don't know if Steve did or not.
Does that one just come in?
I just saw it, I don't know, well, it says a 50.
It's actually the only one that's really, you looked at that Jack Jones right there.
So this Martinez needs to be held up, too, if we don't know anyone that we've gone out and seen.
If you, yeah. All right, motion to accept, Jack Jones.
I make that motion to approve the permit. Jack Jones' permit, and then Ace Taylor Jones, and... Wilson, for the next, sorry.
And Martinez?
Yeah.
And Martinez, yeah.
Okay. Yes, all right. Second?
I second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, David.
And I'll make, um, I think it was Steve, Steve's been on vacation for about a week and a half, so I'll make sure tomorrow morning that he lists these two properties.
Awesome. All right, discuss and take action to purchase bulletproof vests for the police department with all the, I guess, undesirable activity around, pushed this a few weeks ago, and cheap ass information for us to do so.
Evening.
How do you do?
As he was saying, there's been a lot on the news about officers getting killed, it's up 70-something percent, but what's not up the news is the officer getting shot and not killed, it's even more. So, and our officers are paying attention to this stuff. They recently came, they, several of them have level two vests, several have expired vests, we haven't bought anyone. Sweat is the enemy of a catwalk vest, sweat, and of course, the powder under it. So what we wanna do is buy all new vests for everybody, take a lot of time to just replace them all, and start with new ones. We found some that are lightweight, what I'm asking for is the best ones, almost the best ones, there's, there's...
It's a high, medium, but we're also talking about reserves as well, right?
Yes, we have a total, we anticipate a loss in January, and the person that's gonna be coming in, more than likely, is one of our reserve officers, Suzanne Torres, and the other reserve that works is Pedro, Pete Timboga, and he is probably gonna be helping out on weekends, you know, as we're patrolling, so we needed to get vests for them, too.
Yeah, well, I wanted them to be covered as well, we didn't want to fall out there to the situation a little bit.
Seven plus two, so it's nine total. And the Black Alpha Elite vests are the ones we came up with, we think would be the best ones to get. They're on the back of your deal, we... You give some of the details about it, of course, you don't know much, you won't understand most of it, but it just gives some of the gun and the battle of it.
Throwing in about a thousand pop?
Approximately, but we can shop around, this is just one price, but it had all the details, I printed that one out. It's NIJ 3A standards, which is the highest we get, to stop rifle rounds, you gotta go with the big bulky trauma plates, what we used to wear in Iraq, the big heavy, they weigh 30, 35 pounds, and these guys aren't gonna learn that if you put by, they're not gonna wear 35 pound vests. So we can't go to rifle resistant vests, we can go to these 3As, which will start stopping at 44 Magnum.
How much would these weigh for them to wear that?
These, these Alpha Leagues are actually lightweight, they're part of, they're new technology in the last couple years, they've widened them up, which therefore, they're more likely to wear them more often, which of course, good for us.
Can we require them to wear them for purchase of them in this situation?
We can. When I wore vests in Iraq, the reason I don't wear vests all the time is, I got a terrible rash after a lot from all the strikes, that heat, and I was putting talc and powder, whatever, but I couldn't hardly get rid of that rash, and of course, the army don't care, just have the rash. When I got home, I finally got it cured, cleared up.
Would this be out of next year's budget or this year?
This would probably be out of next year's budget. I would assume you'd want these.
Yeah, we'd like to get them soon, the threat is current, and we'd like to go and purchase them pretty soon.
And we can make some adjustments when we get them.
We can make it work.
Think they're off your...
You know, there's a lot of things that go through my head, but those are three words that never collide together.
All right, motion to accept and take action to purchase bulletproof vests for the police department, possibly nine, I believe.
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. You're welcome. All right, please, team, mark the four. Go ahead.
Everything's about normal, calls are up the loop, we had 352 in July, uh, but only nine arrests, so a lot of it's just, we didn't catch them, or it was just mundane type calls. 26 reports, burglaries were about averages, they weren't too bad, had six accidents. And of those 26 reports, we requested seven warrants, those are mostly burglaries and thefts. 61 citations, uh, part of that I was talking about earlier is, is in this 61 citation, we went a little bit low profile in Dallas and Baton Rouge and all that happened, we kind of cut back a little bit, and kind of laid low a little more than usual, so citations suffered for that. Everything's, write them out online, set up a few more calls, it's a little busier, but it's summertime, it always is. Any questions? There was no major violent crimes last month, so that's okay.
Just in the, summertime, it's stupid.
Right. Couple fights, but nothing serious. Nobody got hurt that night, nothing like that.
Was it suspicious person vehicle, was that somebody that just called in, it was mice?
Yeah, somebody looks out the window at midnight, who's that truck, and they call us. And it's their next door neighbor's boyfriend or something.
Why you left it, if you didn't do that?
Like, he's looking out at me.
You, you'd be surprised, please.
I've been down to call at midnight, because I couldn't stand the music.
That's just making you all...
All right, anything else, temple?
Just tell Rob and turn the music up. Thanks, Keith. That'll be Rob and Burgess for everybody watching on YouTube.
Here, the city administrators, hi, if you can report, please.
Okay, you have in front of you, um, the revenue and expenditure report for the date period ending July 51st, 2016, which would have been, uh, less than 24 hours ago, we printed this saying off at 11 o'clock this morning, since this is the first of the month. Just a very, very, very brief and quick look, nothing completely jumped out at me on this, so, um, if you have any specific questions, I'll try to answer them as best as I can. Nothing, like I said, nothing jumped out off the page. Uh, our sales tax in July was down a little bit, we're expecting it to be back up in August. Every quarter you get a, the quarterly, and then the division to the monthly, and the last quarterly we got was a day cooler, man? Man, okay. So we're expecting another big quarterly check in about two weeks from, um, the comptroller Couple of things, um, before I get into the budget, oh, um, this is for y'all's benefit, I think I've talked maybe every single one of you guys individually about this, um, but hopefully, the hosts will see this on YouTube. The water bills went out last week, they're going to be higher than normal, not because we have gone up on water rates, or not because we have adjusted anything here. Uh, we, about a month ago, six weeks ago, we lifted some of the water restrictions, and people have taken full advantage of those water restrictions. Uh, between May and June, we were sending maybe half a million gallons a day to the plant. The lake fills up, we kind of ease back on the restrictions, and now people were sending over a million gallons of water a day to the plant, or to the city, excuse me. So, um, if we're doubling what we're sending to town, somebody's using it.
Are they leaving the water on?
They're, they're using it. And so, um, anyway, just be advised that, that, um, you may hear some gremlins, but again, people are watering their yards, and they're watering their trees, and they're doing some other things. We'll see how that goes from July 15th to August 15th, we'll see if the, once the water bill comes in, if they shut that usage down or not. But we're expecting, um, higher than normal revenues from water sewer. Couple of things for your calendar. August the 15th, I will file the proposed budget with the city secretary's office, that would be Monique Shields. On September the 6th, we will have our first tax rate hearing at 5:15. I have taken the liberty of moving the Labor Day meeting from the 5th to the 6th, and we'll have a tax rate hearing at 5:15. On September the 12th, the following Monday, we will have the second tax rate hearing, tentatively scheduled for 5:15. We will not have a city council meeting to follow that, by the way. On September the 19th, we will adopt the tax rate and budget. Now, if you want to do a budget workshop, if you wanna do some of those things we've done in the past, we can do something like that on the 12th, but you've got plenty of time to let me know if we wanna schedule one. So we will meet the 6th, the 12th, and the 19th, we will have a busy, busy September. One other thing, you're gonna, the ad's gonna go out in the paper, um, I just anticipated, I'm not saying this is what we're gonna do, the way to state handcuffs to cities is, we have to put a proposed tax rate out, and we can't go above whatever that proposed tax rate is. And we have to issue notice nearly a month in advance, so we have no, sitting here today on August the 1st, I can't tell you what the, what the proposed tax rate's gonna be. But I gave you us a bunch of flexibility, so the rate that you're gonna see in the ad will give us the most flexibility as far as what, what the new rate will be, if we go up at all. But if we say we're not going up, and we can't, or if we put a line in the scene, and we can't go past that line. And so, um, just know that we had to get these things taken care of two weeks ago before, uh, before we could put everything in motion, so the state really, um, for all my friends who are in the state legislature watching this, and they're born to, um, they don't really think about the small cities before they put some of these things in place. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. We're very limited, we have a weekly publication, um, we do not have a council that meets every week, and so it really hamstrings us on what we can do, but we have to provide notice, and that's what this is all about. August 12th, I will be at the TML Small Cities Clinic in Andrews, Texas. If anybody's interested, the bus leaves at 5:30 in the morning.
You're at what?
TML Small Cities Problem Solving Clinic. And then, of course, we have a TML, um, convention, first full week in October, I wanna say 5th through the 8th, something like that, is that right?
We're, yes, we said 3 through the 7.
5 through the 7, yes. And this will be in Austin. Oh, yeah. Sure, do what? There's no talk here in the city manager board, is there? I've got a lot of the budget put together already, um, I gotta meet with Chief McMillie, don't God, I get the privilege of meeting with Chief McMillie, on Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, uh, we'll put the finishing touches on the budget, um, one of the, a couple of things right now I can tell you is there will be no pay raises for staff in this budget. There will be some adjustments, and I'll explain those later, um, but nothing, nobody's getting a pay raise. Um, I'm moving some pieces around, moving people from one department to another, things of that nature, but we're not adding to, uh, individual salaries. Insurance is another issue, we received our renewal notice from TML, it was a 12 and a half percent?
Yes.
Um, we have a couple of different options, uh, that we need, that we can exercise with TML, um, Monique and I started having preliminary discussion about that today, um...
They want a 12 and a half percent?
Increase.
Increase in the price?
Yes, ma'am. Believe it or not, that's actually low.
Sure, yes, Chief, you're the most helpful.
I've been there with another city, and their rate went up 35 percent. So, um, one of the things that we did when we were with the budget last year was we built in excess, so we can actually absorb the 12 and a half percent increase this year without really increasing the budget significantly. without really increasing the budget significantly. It's just a matter of, of, uh, what small increase we can do. Does that make sense? And, uh, long story short, I think we budgeted about five hundred, maybe five twenty-five per employee. And the renewal rate came back at five hundred and twenty per employee. And so, we can absorb a lot of it, um, but it's just a matter of, do we wanna try to save a little bit of money here and there at higher deductibles? Those are things that, that's another conversation to need to have with Bonita and some of the departments as well.
State's coming out for the ERS, the new one that is, you put in your money for your health insurance, for your healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're paying for the whole thing, they're not doing anything either?
Nope, it's a, I forgot what they call it.
They give you a, what, they're gonna model it after what they did with school districts. Because the thought, thought process in Austin is, and here's my little thirty-second rant. So again, for my friends in Austin and the legislature are listening to this, if you don't wanna be offended, now's the time to turn it off. Here's the thought process in Austin. If they can, if they can save money on their spreadsheet, they don't really care what the impact is. And they don't care if they're taking from column A and beginning to column B. My understanding of what they're trying to do is they're gonna give you a stipend for exit insurance and let you go shop for insurance on the open market. That probably worked before Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act came into full play. Now there are no more individual policies. Getting an individual policy in Texas is next to impossible. We had better luck with changing the school colors to blue and white than you do getting an affordable individual policy. But the state of Texas, in their infinite wisdom, will give you five hundred dollars to go buy a policy, because that's what it cost us. And then they're gonna turn around and say, now you go buy insurance. But the insurance policies cost you eight hundred to twelve hundred. But they don't care because they're saving money. Does that, does that make sense? They're, they're controlling their costs. We can certainly do that. But I think one of the benefits that we have is that we, we have good employees, and we can treat them well. And one of the benefits of the purchase is, you know, the insurance is provided for. We can cut back, or we can, you know, do some other things, but I would hate, I would hate to go after that system. And we try to, yeah, and what? It's, it's, it will, that'll be one of those things they change in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen. Um, although the folks in Austin don't care if they lose good staff, they don't care if they lose good people, they just, you know, we gotta make the numbers look good on the spreadsheet. We are a spreadsheet-driven legislature. Sorry, there's not. But I know when, when Chief McMillty tried to go to attract new police officers, one of the benefits that he has to compete with is health insurance.
Any job?
Any job. Either that or your pay better be so secure that they can afford the twelve hundred dollar policy. And we're not there. Okay, rant over. Any, any other questions or concerns? The filing date for receipts is August the twenty-second. So, I think we already have a couple of people re-upped for that one. I believe. Oh, um, before I left on vacation, and I didn't have a full report when I got back, until I got back. The dam out the lake, we thought was seeping, and we thought we were gonna have to do some work to it. It turns out that it's just probably some, um, some accumulated rainfall. But we are gonna try to do some work on the dam this fall. Me and Steve talked about that this afternoon, oh, who's what it was. We are also going to, uh, the scheduled date is August the ninth. We're going to pave in front of the elementary school. It'll be, well, it'll look very, very similar to what Eleventh Street looks like. We will do, is that, is it Broad that runs right up in front of the elementary?
Yes.
We will go from Eighth Street to Eleventh Street on Broad, and then we will go on Eighth Street back up to Ninth Street. No, Eighth Street from Broad to what's behind the school, is that East or Avenue?
Avenue.
Right there where the gym is. We'll do that one block, and then we're gonna go from Eleventh Street on the same side. So basically, the elementary's gonna get a big U. That backstreet, Avenue A, is going to get what's called a, um, overlay. We'll just, basically, we're gonna put some cold mix down and try to get that street to go as shake as we can. Uh, we don't think we're gonna be able to get it paved before school starts. But, uh, we are gonna get, um, the ones in front of the school, that intersection at Eleventh and Broad's gonna be taken care of. We have killed out a couple of water lines along Eleventh Street. So, um, we can start paving for that at some point in the future. But, uh, everybody's doing a great job. We did modify, I think I told you this last time, if I didn't, we did modify the work hours this summer, from seven AM to three-thirty with a thirty-minute lunch. Uh, it was just way too hot for these guys to be, they've been out there all day. And, uh, I think we're actually getting more stuff done than we were before. And that is my elongated support. It would've been shorter if you interrupted.
Thirty seconds, we don't have thirty seconds, you ready with it?
Is there any questions, comments, concerns, or issues that I can address with the council?
Can you answer this question? This came in the morning.
Yes. Notice of acute surface water turbidity violation, this is having to do with the boil water notice on the seventeenth and the eighteenth. Again, the state of Texas, in their infinite wisdom, says that we have to send you out a violation that our turbidity levels were high. And for those, um, who may not have known, the turbidity levels were high because the water, the lake was dry for around ten years and it filled up. It hit a hundred degrees, and the new lake became the crock pot, uh, it wasn't cooking or roast. It was cooking mesquite trees and weeds and
Salt seers.
Salt seers and every other thing known to man. And all that stuff is now coming to, or went to the plant. We are treating it. We are spending roughly a thousand dollars a day to treat the water. That's simply because of the inflow of rain. If you go out to Lake Ballinger, and by looking on Facebook, a number of our residents are enjoying the recreational side of Lake Ballinger, and that's a good thing. It also looks like the Black Sea. And so we, we do have to treat that, and Randy and Jason are doing an excellent job of doing that. Steve Cook, who will be here for his retirement, is August the nineteenth. They're doing a good job. And shout out to Ryan Campbell, too. We hired Ryan a year ago. We plucked him away from Angelo State, and he has done yeoman's work plus. And everybody's very, very pleased with young Ryan. Except for he doesn't know anything about the Dallas Cowboys, other than that, he's a good guy. That's simply a general opinion, he had no idea. So, any other questions, comments, concerns, issues, anything for you, Councilman McBride?
Yeah.
Alright, here we question future agenda minds, City Council, please, anything we need to get on the agenda. I think we do need to review the deal that was given to us as far as the trailers, and get that modified and coded.
We, we did that.
We did that.
We did do that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I thought we just talked. Okay. We're not moving around anymore, so. Any else? No? If?
Did we need to do that number seven?
We do not have an executive session to go into. Well, yeah, we do, it'll be about thirty seconds.
Okay.
This is, yeah, yeah, that's my favorite. That's, that's the pictures.
What's your favorite house?
That's your favorite house.
That's my favorite house.
And you weren't here last.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll get Joey in the clip notes, and hopefully, uh, he'll walk in the door. We were voting to condemn his property, and then he indicated that he wanted two weeks, so take a look at it to see if he could fix it up and make some repairs to it.
And you need to check on the back taxes.
Check on the back and, and do some of those other things. He said, you know, we showed him the pictures and told him how bad it was, and this isn't the worst of it. And, um, told me he had two weeks, and he's not here.
Did somebody take him through their house? Because that's what he asked, too, would he have access to getting in and looking?
He never contacted me, as far as I know, never contacted anybody since, since the council made it. I'm sure if he'd asked somebody, we would've been more unhappy to let him in, but, uh, he didn't.
Well, it's not gonna hurt anything if we just leave a table, they're all make, uh, the beans try to visit, I think, if you're all okay with that.
Yeah, the next day.
Two weeks, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I'm okay with that.
So just leave a table?
So that will be August fifteenth?
August fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yes, yes. Alright. She said we did it.
We did it for about forty seconds.
Okay. Alright, now under secret council should be the safety statement, it is authorized by Texas Government Code Section five five one dot zero seven one. Constancy of City Attorney's Department date on proposals of terms to one source.
I'll make that.
Six.
There we go.
Stick it on. Thank you, sir. Second.
See you Wednesday, chief.
Thank you.
Second. All voters say aye.
Alright.
Thank you, babe.